We would. So we as.
Okay, Jackie.
Yes, it stopped for some reason, so I wanted to make sure it was on.
Exactly. So we had looked at that four or five years ago and we really, I think, spent a fair amount of time and there are some downsides and upsides. But I do think it's something that we should look at because that would have helped as we look back, that would have helped today. And so maybe we can see a more realistic reason. We didn't necessarily see, I think, one of the issues is I don't think we saw how were we going to use that specifically. Now you can see where, as you have the ups and downs in a given year or given years where you can use that. So I think that would be really good. The other just. We also potential, you know, on the good side, if the weather continues to be forty-five degrees in January for this year. By climate change or anything like that, but for this year, there could be some savings if we're not paying overtime and not paying less salt. Utilities would be lower, so there are some things if the weather continues to be like this. If it goes the other direction, we have a really bad February, then it could be the other, other, other way. But I think other than that, yeah, I mean, I think anything else that we're, we look at is pretty draconian, like, things we wouldn't want to do, right? That's kind of where.
Yeah, I mean, there's, it comes down to probably staffing, if you, you know, you've cut staffing positions. But that has such a drastic impact on, you know, students and, you know, and colleagues and everything else. I, I wouldn't recommend, you have spring sports, you could cut high school spring sports. But think about the, what would that, the uproar that would cause, this sort of thing. And I just don't think that's good for kids, you know, when we're working very hard to continue to get this number down. But I, I don't think taking it that far would be, my opinion, that would not be appropriate to do.
They're all pretty, yeah, these, those are, that's where we understand, that's where we are, we're doing everything we can. Mariana, Jeff, everyone, and I know, appreciate, and always working hard to get this number to where we are. And, you know, we'll continue working on it, but as the years go, days go on, we don't have as much, fewer things that are going to impact it either good or bad. As I said, too, we, you know, we have a healthy under the unbound now and it's meant for exigent circumstances such as this. And this one would be a little dang, but it would still keep us above that threshold where it would still end our fiscal year above where it was last year, right now. Now, yeah, that money we could have used next year to pay down the tax increase and stuff like that, I understand that, but this is one of those things that we haven't anticipated. But we still have some savings on the town side, too. You know, I hate to say it, but we haven't had to really touch our, our contingency policy this year yet, we've been fortunate. So, yeah, everything we can do to minimize that, you know, will work out.
One last question, so like, Jamie, you've been here sixteen years and Kevin was here a while before, I've only been here six months, so I don't have a lot of institutional, you know, knowledge and whatnot. So like, have we, in the past, maybe a couple decades, have we had to go to the town for a special appropriation for us in similar, similar situation like this? Or is it something that, that's not, doesn't have precedent?
Not in my years.
Right about the time, I think, Justin, I was probably on the board, which you probably weren't involved in. I think we did because there was some type of a settlement that required some funding out of that, so. And the town has hit it once since, I can remember that was, I think, two thousand twelve. We had a, again, a court settlement which required us to go into that for a little bit. But it's very rare that we do this, so, I mean, it's been a lead, it's probably been ten years, so. I mean, I think that shows that we've all wanted to do it wisely and it's something rarely, rarely have to do.
Yeah, that was kind of my, my point, like, you know, we, this is something that, like, doesn't happen regularly, so we are doing our due diligence. To make sure that we're like, you know, not including any fluff, anything like that, so like, this is just unprecedented because of the healthcare and the utilities that. A year ago, we're just not expecting that.
Thanks, that's. Okay, we're going to move on from that item and the next item is for discussion and action is the board and committee we've done this. So thanks, everyone, for sending in, thanks, Kevin.
Yeah.
So. Thank everyone for sending in their, you know, priority choices of what committee they want to be on and, and for the most part, I would say we were able to kind of meet everybody's asks. So there's a few, you know, few changes, try to keep, for the most part, a lot kind of static. There weren't a few changes, but appreciate everybody submitting, so you'll see, and I did text everyone where they ended up prior this. And then for the personnel policy committees. I made a few changes, just trying to get. Folks on the committees, I think the ones that we are, are going to be upper discussion are administrators and custodians this year. Secretaries, you just finished, teachers, I think they what last year, four, losing track, so it's probably another.
We got another change.
Yeah, well, well, and errors, we just. Yeah, well, so, so those are the two that will be most active. For this year, and then we have the ad hoc committees and the, you'll see, the board liaisons to the other committees. And appreciate everybody volunteering, we have, it's nice that there's a good, broad. You know, a lot of people on a lot of different committees and sharing the work, so I appreciate that. Any questions or comments?
I just have one.
Jamie, Lee, and then Candace.
I didn't get a heads up that I was being moved. So I was kind of shocked when I saw that I came off paraprofessional to be, was put on secretaries. Considering Candace and I just negotiated their very first ever contract. So I was kind of shocked to see that I was taken off of that and put somewhere else that I didn't even have on my radar. I'm kind of curious why.
Yeah, so what I've tried, I appreciate it, so I was trying to do is just to get balance, we have some newer board members who haven't been in negotiations, and people have done negotiations before. So I was trying to balance and get some people who have more, well, more experience and people a little less experienced to balance it out. So that was the rationale for that. Again, this is for this year, to be honest, you know, Paris, we just negotiated secretaries. It's not up for this year anyway, so it's predominantly at the end of the day, it's administrators and, but that was the last.
I'm not in favor of it. I knew that I was going to have a busy year this year, which is why I resigned as chair of policy. And I put that up for you to, to re-sign. Knowing what policies and committees I was signed up for, I was aware I was going this year. I, again, I'm not in favor of being moved off of my committees, obviously, the second time it's happened to me, once with Tim and once now with you. I didn't, didn't get a heads up, I know some people did get heads up. I, I'm not prepared to be moved when I didn't ask to be moved.
Thank you, Lee.
Uh, yes, I might have missed the previous meeting, I vaguely remember having some discussion around it. But the reimagine committee and the D E and I committee, I know they were both ad hocks that are no longer on here, is that because?
Yes, so the D E I have another, we have the passenger committee which you're, you're on and Esteban is on already, so it kind of felt like it's redundant. And the reimagine committee, we met like twice and haven't met in a year plus, so I.
It's been this year.
Have really, we never really did anything, so I took it off. The lack of, I mean, if we agree and we think there is a need or a want, we can do that, but it was, it's something that I felt like it's just sitting here and you never meet. Literally, I hope.
Yeah. I don't think it's my hill that I am right now, given all of the other budgetary stuff that we're working through, but. I think once we move past this budget cycle, I would like to revisit that conversation because. Those, like, two meetings that we did have were some of the most, like, energized I felt on the board in terms of really thinking through, like, different initiatives. Again, this feels really silly to say right now, given the conversation we just had, but I think there were a lot of, like, really good discussions that came out of that committee and making through, I don't. What the next chapter would look like for Eastline Public Schools, and so, again, timing's not right now, but I don't want that to go away forever.
Yeah, happy to discuss it, and we should also, probably also in terms of triple A, I don't mind.
There's a lot, yeah, I mean, even some of the culture and climate stuff that we're getting ready to do with your LA, there's, there's lots of good overlap. But I, yeah, some of the initiatives and things that we discussed in the meeting were, I think, really relevant and would be really impactful for our district, but I don't want it to just totally go away.
Okay, and Bill, if you want to triple A and then at least and think about, if you think about re- met, you know, is there something that we do need one, maybe it's something that triple A can suggest as well?
Yeah.
Candace?
Okay, so I wanted to step off of the chairs' positions, mainly because another busy year. But from the moment I came onto the board, I've either chaired the triple A and/or the FFO. So I really wanted to give the opportunity for somebody else to chair, especially after listening to some board members express their desire to do so. And they felt that they didn't have the opportunity to take that lead. So I thought that this was a really great opportunity, but I did ask to remain on all of my committees. I believe there's something to be said for continuity, especially when you're working on contracts. So I am very thankful that I was left on teachers' contracts, and I think that some might applaud that as well. Also, the Paris, again, that was something that was developed very recently, and then the custodians, which I was taken off of. So I would like to go back on to that, if that's not applicable, that's unfortunate. Because I do think that there's something to be said for continuity, and also, on the end. Of people that we're negotiating for. I think that if, well, if it were me and somebody was working on a committee for my livelihood, I would want continuity. I would want to have faith in the people, right? Not that the people that are on there, they wouldn't have faith with, but I do think that there's something to be said for continuity. In addition, just really quickly, I think that moving forward, we might want to have more conversation on it. I certainly did get a text that was great, and it was really about the FFO and that's awesome. But if you're going to be taken off, because I would have, I would have said this not publicly, you know what I mean? But this is really just my only opportunity, so maybe going forward, we might want to have more conversation prior to putting up. Just my thought.
Thanks, Candace, and appreciate it, and, and, you know, to your point about continuity, here, here's the balance that I'm trying to get is I absolutely want continuity, which is why. There's people who are, you know, on each of the committees or people who have been on the committee, but I also need people to learn the different parts as well to come on. And, and do so, keeping an experienced person who's been through it, gone through the challenges, and then putting some people. Giving different experience, so you learn the different parts, or new members like Esteban to join the team, I, you know, I wouldn't want, you know, Esteban and two. Single, not, not, you specifically, but having a new member and then having two people who hadn't done it before either. So I need, wanted to kind of get the experience, people have gone through these before, with some people who have been through lots of those. So that was the rationale, you know, I'm happy to talk to anyone off, you know, we can. Save this for the next meeting, if people want to discuss it after, especially the, or we can pull that piece off and have a discussion, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to do that. The top part I'd like to keep, because, I mean, personnel, we're not having any conversations until August or September for any of these, right?
Yeah, no, so, yeah, so it won't be until the.
None of these kind of come into play for another six months or, or something, the top part, so our standing committees, I would want that part. Because those are, are standing committees and the. The board liaisons, I would want to confirm, because those are happening, starting, you know, today or tomorrow or whatever. So, but I'd be happy to discuss the others, if there were rationale apologies and there was disconnect, that was conversation.
It was actually the very same rationale was why I wanted to back off from the chair for the FFO, that way other people can have the opportunity, you know what I mean? So I, I get it, but I, you know, I'll join Lee, as I'm not going to die on the hill, but I just want to bring that out because I do think that it's important. And especially that contract is coming up. So.
Thanks, and just a comment around the piece around the rationale of putting an experienced board member with a newer board member. I'm also, you were having my care of a ring, you know, but I am very appreciative that I will have. The experience and give a leverage, being in particular, so. Why would I do? Have that continuity stay because of the. Because we will both remain on that committee. But also, it's kind of like a learning algorithm, since this will be, you know, initial chair of the. So thanks.
Other comments? So I'm happy to, you know, if, if you can make a motion to approve or pull off the, I mean, if people want to discuss further, the personnel policy committees, I'm happy to have further discussion about those. If, if people are comfortable with the rest, I think that's important that moves forward, because that's work that's going to start happening now. Personnel policy committees, I'd be happy to talk further about, that's the rationale, rationale that wanted balance. And make sure we have people who have been through these before with some people who are newer, either newer to the board or newer to that committee.
So Eric, are you asking for a motion to approve the committee's suggestion?
I'm happy, I mean, maybe I'll. I'm happy to. I mean, I guess I'm looking for feedback. All the. We approve the rest.
Would you have to do that if a change was going to be made? Okay.
Yeah.
Jamie's not.
Otherwise, we'd have to revisit, I mean, we'd approve it and then we'd have to bring it back.
Eric? Eric, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, it's just, why don't we just table, I'd like to make a suggestion, we table it until everyone has had a chance to, to talk to you. And at least continue to express what they, their concerns and what they would, what they would like to do.
Absolutely, for the.
Yeah, that's just.
Those are the middle, just the middle section, right? Because the other parts, we need to start moving forward and.
What, what's the middle part, the negotiating teams?
Negotiating teams, exactly, those are the ones that I think there's questions about.
Okay, whatever you, however you think we should phrase it, let's do it.
Yeah, perhaps, and the personnel policy and the board will come back.
Yeah.
That aspect.
Okay, that work for people that sound.
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay.
How do we do it?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass the committee assignments without. And then table the assignments for negotiation committees to be reviewed over the, and approved at the next meeting.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Same. Okay, thanks, everyone, and we can discuss those further, so we can move those original. And after that, so thanks, everyone, for that, let's. The next area is discussion action item for personnel is for the proposed non-certified employee secretarial bargaining contract from seven one twenty-two to six thirty twenty-five.
Yeah, so we had some, some good negotiations with our secretary of bargaining group, a few members are here tonight, so thanks for joining us, they had ratified the contract. We were in the back and forth, and I think we came to a good contract that we agreed upon, which I'd shared with all of you and the board that will approve that, see.
Great. And any questions? Your motion? Anyone want to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed nine. Non-certified employee secretary, secretary of bargaining contract for seven one twenty twenty-two to six thirty twenty twenty-five.
A second.
Just second for the comment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Same. Thank you so much, thanks for, everyone, really appreciate it. That's great. So then, moving on, the next is the discussion action items for policy. First topic is suggested revision, second review for the suggested revision of policies in nine thousand series. Jamie, did you have any?
Passed by chairman of the. All right, so this is the second review, second reading of policies in the nine thousand series, when she did a policy audit this year, this last year, it came from eleven now. Will be reviewed two hundred and forty something policies, and we have combined deleted or added. So this is the end of our home stretch. So this is second review, revision of policies. These are revisions, not deletions or new, so the revisions would be for ninety-one thirty-two-two, ninety-one thirty-two-four, ninety-two fifty, ninety-three twenty-five-point-one, ninety-three twenty-six, and ninety-three forty. And these do need a motion passed.
Any questions or comments? Jeff, you didn't get any? Okay.
I would like to make a motion to approve that these visions to the suggested nine thousand series policies as presented.
I'll second.
In the second, further comment? All those in favor, and I.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Same. Motion passes, the next topic is a second review is suggested deletion of policies in the nine thousand series.
Alright, so they're three up for deletion, they are ninety-ten, ninety-three twenty-five C nineteen, that was a temporary COVID policy, and ninety-three fifty. These are four deletion changes that are going to do.
Any questions? Comments, Jeff, did you hear anything on things? Okay.
I would make a motion to delete things suggested nine thousand policies series as presented.
Lisa, all those, oh, further comment? All those in favor, say aye. Post. Same. Motion passes, so Jamie, Alisa, and Jill thinks that's the whole run, right?
For the moment, we have some.
That was a yeoman's effort of going through every single policy, some that had not been reviewed since the early nineties.
The ninety-nine, I believe, is our latest, our oldest.
So.
Maybe ninety-seven?
Yeah, ninety-three or ninety-four.
There was no at ninety-one. There's some ninety-one's?
So. Every policy has been reviewed and updated, worked with attorneys to get their recommendations, and it is a lot of work. And Jamie, thank you for leading that, and I appreciate it, and Lisa and Jill helping out, it was a lot of work and different times people joined.
We wouldn't have been able to do it without Jackie.
Yes, Jackie, yeah. He's track of all of this, I would.
She helped us organize all of it. I think in a couple weeks, I'll be much more thankful than I have.
Exactly. Okay, well, that closes the discussion and action items for tonight, and we move on to administrative reports, and Jeff?
Yeah, a couple of items, number one, we should be great honored to recognize Jamie, who was being brought on to the K Board of Directors. She went over the other day, and we have a letter here from K, so. That's, that's exciting, you know, she has a meeting on the twenty-fourth of January, retreat, and there's about five meetings to follow, so, that's great, so. Absolutely, so, congratulations, you know, to you, Jamie, so, that's wonderful, Chris. I think the only one, one other board member is that Mary, the other board member, in the history of the board, that was, that was on there, so. Way to go.
They're tough shoes to follow.
You did go excellent, we expected to be president of the board down the road. Congrats, we're starting to gear up to look at posting for the athletic director position for next year. End of January, February timeframe, so we're looking at to post. Just to share out publicly, that, that's going to be an administrative position funded through Steve Argus's salary, all the stipends that would have been given out to. In Steve and the assistant A Ds, as well as the middle school stipend, too. So having an administrative position allows the person to cover at the middle school, so you can cover all the middle school sports and so forth. Women will do that because we have a stipended AD position. So, um, it's time, we're one of the only districts around that doesn't, you know, have a full-time AD. So, uh, and we can almost fund it fully through all of the, um, you know, the, the money that's there, you know, currently. So that's important as well, given our budget, you know, going into next year. So, um, that would be a, by one start, so, um, we'll be talking further about that. You know, interviews won't be until later in the year, obviously, but we want support participation.
How long has it been since we've done without a book?
I don't think we've ever.
We've never had one.
Yeah, it's always been a stipended position.
Jeff, Scott, do you guys know?
I think maybe way back before.
Oh, maybe.
Way, way back.
It's gotta be way back.
Then, and then they put it point six, point four, Scott did it for.
Now, will you format that with a hiring committee?
Yes, exactly, it would be the same process that we'd use for assistant principal, or, so they'll be all committee. Um, yeah, um, so. We're, uh, we're gonna move, move forward with that, so stay tuned, um, the board of finance meeting, uh, this coming Wednesday, so I'll get on, uh. Deficit, um, and, uh, you know, share information, they requested some additional information, staffing numbers. Um, special education numbers, so, um, I want to make sure everything is in your hands first, and it was in the week of the update. We present some slides tonight, all that will be formulated, I'm tomorrow morning, we'll send that to them, so they have it for Wednesday evening. So that will go out tomorrow, um, Kevin had already mentioned that, uh, you know, Mariana and I met with Kevin and Kevin Gervais. He's the new town finance director, trying to get back a little bit of a schedule of, of meetings, we used to meet with, uh, the previous selectmen and. Um, and the finance director monthly, so, um, we're, we're looking at, uh, getting back on some scheduling. Um, and I'd also talked with Pete, Peter Mitchell, he called, uh, about the N X Center, just asking, um, you know, my opinion about. What it potentially could use for, for students and so forth, so if I liked the theater idea, um, you know, keeping maybe part of it potentially for, you know. As a movie theater, but also having live theater, um, in some of the space, uh, so he's looking at all options, so it's interesting to have a conversation.
It's actually really nice to hear.
Yeah, yeah, he wanted, I'm glad that they're keeping it, or wanting to keep it in that, uh, in that sense, rather than, you know, something. He's got some wild ideas from outside organizations and stuff, so, uh, it was good to talk, and I talked in high school, we both went to high school there together, so. It's nice to talk to him, so that's, uh, that's all I have.
So, um, I have an update with the Integrated Curriculum Committee came together today to finalize our decision on, on which program will move forward. With the pilot, um, is that the reading pilot? That's for the literacy, um, primary resource at the elementary level, K five. On, um, K five teachers will be piloting. And my view was the program that surfaced to the top. Um, through the work of the committee, um, just as a reminder, this was a process that started last spring. Um, we developed, uh, rubrics that we utilized, that were mod- you know, models from other states. We also invented some of our other components, um. One of the most, one of the, one of the, one of the important components that the committee wanted to be sure that this program did was. Had the ability to integrate with other content areas, science, social studies in particular. And so, uh, that's something we adapt the rubric for, um. And, uh, you know, over the course of the past nine months or so, um, we've gotten to a space where we had two that we were really considering. And, um, in the end, there was really an overwhelming response that my view would be the program that we would move forward with our. First pilot experience, and we will kind of, this is a journey, we'll see how we end up, uh, in April, when the pilot ends, it's, it's due to start February. Well, we start with our professional development, January, excuse me, February second. The pilot gets, uh, implemented, the first implementation for teachers will be February twenty-second. And then, um, we'll wrap up right before April break, um, so it's a, it's a six-week unit, but we've, I think we built in around seven weeks. For the pilot to occur in buildings, little room for teachers. We have twenty-two teachers interested in piloting, um, in addition to that, we have a couple of special education teachers who will sort of be liaisons in the building. And sort of see all the resources you, uh, work within their, uh, resource rooms, and, um, there are also implements, um, excuse me. Tiered intervention supplies that will loop in our interventions eventually around the use of those, um. So, um, we're queuing that up as we speak right now to move forward with. I, I just reached out to our, um, our contact at MyView, um, I will say that the level. This pilot is free to the district, um, they provide us with all the resources, we're expected to obviously return them when we're done. Um, but there's upwards of probably between ten and twelve hours of professional development that is happening for teachers within the pilot. Free to us as a resource, which is really. Quite phenomenal, our teachers will receive five hours of professional development before they even do day one of implementation, so. Um, I think that's a real added benefit when we're moving our teachers to a primary resource, something that is maybe something. A lot of our teachers are not accustomed to, and so professional development in that area is going to be really important. Um, you know, so I, eventually, I would, you know, when we are ready, I'm happy to bring additional information more formally to you. In the way of, you know, the process, um, we did some survey questions of teachers on where are they and, you know. The, the need or want to adopt a primary resource, so that, you know, I could share that data on the weekly update, but, you know, however you would like. To, um, learn more about our, our journey, I'm happy to share that with you. So, um, and then in terms of the state's very, well, it's really not the state, it's the legis- the timeline set in the legislation is very tight. And so Jeff and I have a, an appointment to talk with Holly on Wednesday to kind of advocate that. This February sixteenth date of deciding waiver or program. Can the legislators work on providing us with a little bit more wiggle room, so we can take the time that's necessary to make an informed decision. And not being rushed into it, um, so not sure where that will go, but we're going to try to advocate for that.
So you haven't gotten any information about the waiver at all yet?
I do.
You do? Oh, okay.
The districts have received, um, you know, the waiver questions that need to be, uh, answered, you know, as well as the data that needs to be submitted to the state.
Was there an extension given? Because I'm only asking because we actually asked and advocated at CAE when we went. Um, so I was curious, because the answer was that there possibly could be an extension.
Yeah, I've, I've gotten that same feedback, so they did extend, like, initially districts were supposed to let the state know by mid-December. What they were going to do, so they extended that to January sixteenth, which is.
Which isn't really much, but okay.
Um.
We need a full, you know.
Yeah.
And then the waiver needs to be completed by the end of February.
Right.
It is a robust.
Well, that's why the question of the extension, because even when we were at CAE in November, nothing had come out yet, so that was.
We should have at least until the end of the year, um, with this, um, and that's a big. Project for many districts.
The state is receiving two rounds of funding to support, um, the implementation in the, of this legislation. Um, I'm not sure how much you know about that, it's twelve and a half million, first round of funding, um, that will start next year, and then another twelve and a half million. Following year. So, uh, there are funds, uh, I think that will come in the way of, uh, grants that districts will have to apply to. Not all of that funding will go to, go directly to districts to purchase supplies, it'll be for professional development, um, both within, you know. The state, um, and what the state provides for districts for resources, but also, um, for districts. I think that's enough.
Any questions? Oriana?
I just have two things, so, um, Munis, the implementation of, we've been talking about now for years and years. Finally signed off on everything, and we are moving from initially you're going to be self-hosted, um, and we decided, uh, Kevin, the new finance director. And I decided it would be better if they're hosting us, so it'll basically be cloud-based, so if, you know, if. We have any, any type of issues or it's all up to Tyler, they have. Very various servers, so, um, we thought it would be best and more efficient to, um, have them posted. So they are, uh, we're starting the implementation at the end of this month, um, basically they're going to load everything on, um, do what they need to do. And then we assign the project manager, and so, um, if you have any questions on that. Um, and then the other thing, I just wanted to, I know that everyone is aware of how things work, but in light of the article that was in the paper. That cited, um, a board account, um, it is not a board account, so. We do not have the ability to maintain our own accounts or our operating budget. All of the accounts are under town, the town has since implemented, uh, put in, um, procedures to assist with that. To help detect that type of, um, activity, but it's not a board account that we would have been able to do something about. So I just want to make sure that everyone's clear, and we are, um, they just moved forward with implementing something on the payroll account. Which again is not our account. It is a town account that, you know, if something like that happens, it'll be stopped before it even happens, um, based on, it's called a positive pay. It's a, uh, process where, uh, checks are presented, if our file that we've sent to them, if it doesn't match our file, it'll be. So, I just want to make sure that everyone's clear, and if anyone has any questions for me.
It's just a board of a check.
It was a board of a check, correct, when we cut our, correct, we, we do cut our own checks, but it is on town account, we send. The list to the towns of that they know how much, you know, we cut, so that they can make sure they're.
Just to reiterate, there's no money lost out of our operating budget at all.
Correct.
So, just so.
I would just like to thank you for saying something publicly, because I think that it was alarming for so many people, including myself when I read it. And I think that if, if it was clearer, it written, um, and a little bit more accurate, unfortunately, so thank you for that.
We caught, we're caught off guard, uh, by that as well, so.
Thanks, Mariana, yeah, no, thank you, I appreciate the update on that, it's, um. I know you have done a lot working on our internal control for board event, we made a lot of changes. For how much our cash, our advantage, a, a lot of, uh. Our side signature authority, all that, so, you know, a lot of changes. Okay. We have, we're committee reports, we had, uh, three SSO. After late this afternoon, it's, uh, literally just reviewed the, discussed the, um, deficit, so there wasn't. We kind of covered it all, so there's nothing new there, um. It's the next triple, uh, it's coming up, right?
January, January.
End of January, policy is like next January eighteen, or something, next week. Uh, and then.
Came to a meeting webinar, um, on the new legislation on Friday. I know you were going to be on, were you on?
Yes, I was, yes, I was on, Jeff, did you?
Yeah, I was on.
Um, the feedback that I got was they didn't feel like they really answered, and that the State Department of Education wasn't really forthcoming. So. As part of my, I'm sorry, my board of directors, we came, I have been assigned as Chair of State Legislation Relations Committee. So I spent my morning at the Harvard today with a state legislator talking about the reading program. And his thoughts are that. Waivers are not looking likely, that it more looks like we'll have extensions of your waivers. Um, so just keep that in your head, um, but as the new state relations chair, I can lobby for state boards. All of board's events in the state Connecticut, so if there's anything that you'd like me to talk to Harvard about. Um, we had a lot of things on our agenda today, uh, reading ECS mandates, um. Fundings, um, so more to come, obviously, and all of that as they're gearing up for the legislature, but there is a proposed bill, a bunch of them in session. That have to do with education, one of which is re-waiting the ECS grant. Um, so I don't know what that's going to be, but. I'll keep you as informed as I can, I have a bunch of meetings coming on. I was there today, um, I have a webinar of Zoom next week. Um, during the legislation, there's going to be a bunch of them, but I have five core meetings, but I have a bunch of Zoom stuff. So.
So the waiver thing is interesting, but it doesn't shock me, because it's almost as though the state is really making this. Change incredibly attractive for districts, and there are some districts that simply do not want to participate. They feel, and at least that was the feedback that we got, um, at CAE in November, where they're saying, listen. We've got an incredibly robust system that's working outstanding for our district, yet. You're really being essentially told you have to make the change, so now they're limiting the waiver opportunity, they're ingratiating with money. It's really interesting.
Said that the State Department of Education is really gung-ho on this one.
Hmm.
Don't look for any gimmies on it. Um, but it's out of the legislature's hands, because it's in the State Department's hands now, so.
I think there are districts across the state who have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yep.
Programs such as, you know, the TTC units of study, reading and writers workshop. That, um, you know, are really digging their heels in as a result of some of the fiscal investment.
Well, that's what we brought up to him today, but he said that, you know, the governor is not looking at that kind of thing, he's looking at community businesses and. Economy and not education.
I, I will say that we are in need of a primary resource here in Eastline, so I think this is a good opportunity for us. The, the vetting process, our work around learning more about the science of reading, health programs support that, but not being isolated in that. In that this integration of science and social studies not only supports how to teach kids, um, how to read. But is important in scheduling the school day, being efficient and effective with our time, so the process has been really, really beneficial for us here. At Eastline, um, it's just the timeline, the timeline's tough, yeah. It really is, and so, you know, we, we, we went back and forth on can we pilot two at one time, and. There's only so much bandwidth in the district to take things on, and.
Asked about the, because it, the timeline falls in the middle of the budget cycle, right? So you don't know if you've had a waiver until after the budget cycle is over.
Right.
Correct, so you don't know whether or not you have to budget for a new program until after you've funded it and approved, so.
Really complicated.
I just.
They, they notice the timeline, but they don't really seem to care about the timeline.
I just got one more, but I actually got a lot, but I'm just going to ask this one, about the special ed, um, reimbursement rate. So, clearly, those, those numbers are increasing, and they are going to, they are going to continue to increase.
When I throw out Jeff's five hundred number.
Right.
Um, there was a lot of shocked looks in the room.
Mm-hmm.
Um. When I said how many students compared to the, that we have, they didn't, they don't realize the prevalence rate is going up. Um, but they were talking about changing it to maybe a weighted special ed number based on. Exactly how special needs, much money you're spending, so it'd just be a flat rate for special needs anyway.
Okay, so that's promising.
Again, it has to go through legislature and everything like that, but those were ideas that were brought up.
Something's got to be with that, just great, because right now, Eastline gets just under six million dollars a year in, um.
Excess costs.
Exactly, your educational cost share, um, that's slated to go down now, moving forward, so.
Yeah, when you said that.
Yeah, you saw that it goes down under three million over the next five years, so it cuts in half, um, and that's money that goes to the town, we don't see that. But that's going to be impactful, so.
We had talked collectively, um, at CAE in the thought of district-wide and different districts. Writing a letter to the State Department of Education, and, you know, like Jamie had said, well, you know, they're, they were shocked by that number. They should be shocked by that number, they should be fully aware of what's happening across the state, um, and, uh, be willing to have the conversations. For reallocation, more reimbursement to help.
So they're looking at public hearings for their education.
Okay.
Um, the end of January for ECS, um, doing some info sessions, and then their public hearings will be around the end of this month.
So that would be a good time, yeah.
Perfect time to get any letters out to the state, you want to have your voice heard, um, ECS funding or school funding in general.
I'll be at a legislative breakfast Friday morning too, so I'll tell.
I think we should.
Thanks, Jamie. Uh, Kate, is, is there a learn or learn is later?
No, no.
You had one, okay, go ahead, yeah.
Just forwarded to Jeff and Jackie, and I didn't know if he was forwarded on the synopsis of what had happened.
Yeah.
Um, three points of interest, I think, um, a man by the name of Matt Peel has been hired as the interim assistant principal for. Um, three points of interest, I think, um, a man by the name of Matt Peel has been hired as the interim assistant principal for the regional multi. Cultural magnet school, the children's museum had a grant and is going to allow. All of the classrooms from the friendship school to attend for free in transportation to the children museum. Um, during this next school year, which I thought was really nice, but kind of like, why not us? And then esports is a program that's up at Goose Wall High School. And there was a group of people who went up there and they are really excited about it. They're learning how to integrate gaming and curriculum into the course offerings. And there's a business partnership with esports and they're talking about the kind of thing that Barry used to talk about, about. Advocacy and, um, agency and engagement and how higher, you like, everything you want a kid to learn. And higher thinking skills and problem solving and working in a community and team base, I thought that was a really kind of. Cool program, so maybe something for us to think about with our pathways program or. You know, I, I would see Mr. Big Good getting excited about that over there, but. Those kinds of things, I think that's the nice thing about going to these cave meetings is the. Interesting and dynamic things that are going on regionally and ideas that we could replicate if, if we have. Purpose all to do that.
Okay. Moving on, board comments and future agenda.
Um, I, I shared this with everybody I know in the last week, a, a week ago, I read an article about. It, the site is chat G P, G P T, I don't know how many people are aware of it, it's a artificial intelligence site. Um.
Dot com.
And it is mind-boggling, blow your mind stuff. So it, it is a website that will write papers for you, it'll generate curriculum for you. It will generate code, it will write a poem for you, it does. Amazing stuff and in almost real time. And I figured, wow, all my English teachers must know about this, right? None of them. Not a single English teacher knew about it, the principal didn't know about it, so I've been telling everybody. Of course, I asked my students and almost all of them. Alright, and so. I was about to create a site and it then it asked for your name and your phone number and I'd say, well, I'm just going to hold off for a minute. So one of the students, oh, Mr. Derry, I'll show you, he calls it up. And we happen to be talking about two-stroke diesel engines, he says, well, write a five paragraph essay explaining two-stroke diesel engines. Boom, there it was, and it was right on. And another kid goes, well, I need to do a, a, a paper in Chinese on the history. Uh, on the significance of Chinese news year, New Year, boom, in Chinese, done. And then, of course, they copy it and translate it in so they could read what it wrote because they couldn't read their Chinese. It was just mind-boggling and I was talking to a friend of mine who is kind of connected with the people who developed this stuff. And connected to this is A I that is generating basically fake video. You could, it, it, you could say, create a movie scene where a car crashes into the tree and it will. Generate this and it will look real, so the repercussions of all this stuff i- is pretty mind-boggling, really. Someone has already created an app that teachers could use, kind of like turn it in or whatever to, to find out whether the kid actually. Use, because right now, turn it in, none of the, none of the things will show up as it, as being plagiarized and will even. Present the sources for you, so you could submit the whole thing with your sources all cited, so. I just think principals, if your teachers may not know about this, you may want to share that with them because it's pretty cool. And I think as educators, it's our job now to make kids. You know, uh, I, I told my students, I said, guys, you know, spell check's a tool, right? We, we use it, right? Calculators are tools. This is a tool and in my opinion, it's going to be one more thing that separates the motivated kids. From the unmotivated kids, it's going to widen the gap, the kids who are less motivated are going to use it as a tool to not do the work. And the kids who are motivated are going to use it as a tool to learn more and as a building block that they can jump off of to. To, to get even smarter, so. It, it's as teachers, I think it's going to be in our face and we got to figure out how to use it to our advantage versus, um. You know, letting, you know, letting some kids kind of slip through. I, 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 I've been really blown away that I think it's, it's an interesting turn in, in artificial intelligence.
Is anybody else shocked by that? I am completely shocked by that.
You, to, to witness it right, uh, you know, create a poem even, whatever it's going to be.
A lot of teachers are already fit, already down that.
Oh, really?
Yeah, but I, I appreciate your take on that, so, but I agree, the bringing of the pool, there's a lot of.
Well.
But it's also.
It, yeah, it's, it's, you know, if you want to learn about something and you want it to do the searching for you and, and kind of pulling it, it. It did a pretty good job on the, the two things that I witnessed, well, I don't, I didn't read the Chinese, I could read that one, but, um, it was pretty amazing.
Part of it, right? The submissions of English class, English class or, you know, um, wherever to. Be informed and as to what is coming from your student and what.
Yeah. I just think now, you know, as teachers, we, we really need to talk about, you know, there's always been shortcuts, right? You could pay somebody to write your paper or whatever, there's always been shortcuts and it's, and, and it's a character thing and it's. And, and now I think it's a tool too, though, you can use it as a, as a. Tool to your advantage or you could use it as a shortcut.
So I did get a text from one of our district line instructional technologists saying, oh my gosh, we have to talk about this and it's on our meeting agenda.
I have a feeling there's going to be a lot of conversations about this coming up soon.
Um, I, I get the sense that she's thinking about how can it be used as a tool for students right now. Um, so, you know, we'll, we'll have, we'll start with the initial conversation on Thursday, I don't know much about it, um, but. I think she's planning on giving us a little demo and, and share her thinking in terms of how can it be used as a tool.
Has it been, I've been running for a while.
I, I, I know, I've, you know, I've heard of A I for a while, this site is relatively new. And it was, there's been a number of articles on it that, you know, basically professors and journalists and programmers are going to be out of a job. Computers are going to be doing it for us, um, I'm not. Yeah, and, and, you know, ten years from now, what's it going to look like, you know?
Right.
Thank you, thanks, Bill.
So I've been getting a lot of texts or messages, people asking about the budget and. Don't cut this and don't cut that, and I know everybody, we all want the best, we all want the future of our schools to be the best. Schools and, in the universe, right? So I, I guess my question is, is how did we come to the suggested budget that we have? I know at one point I had suggested that everybody have a, a slice of the pie, everyone put in. We, you know, we all know that if we have to do with less, how could we do with less? Did, did, did that go out to the public, did that go out to all of our faculty and staff and? Do we offer them that opportunity? Because that's what I'm hearing from, people are saying, we can't let this happen. And I'm just saying, did we give them that chance to say, these are some things and then from that, you know, make the pie?
I think some of that is to come.
Right.
Because, you know, I was presenting it tonight, but the budget workshops, what it does, it releases a lot of information, so I think that's why you're, you're getting some of that, but I think. That, that is, those are the conversations that between now and February twenty-seventh that should be had, they're going to be had.
Okay, 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 and then the other thing that I'm wondering about is I know that we have a. Significant number of kids who are identified with special education needs. When do we look at the residency? I know when I was interim director of special education in Madison. One of the things that I did was to look at who lived where. And if we were paying for another, for a student's education who maybe didn't reside in our town, but grandparents were. Before and after childcare, are we, do we do that? Have we done that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Check, um, if we have any questions about residency, you know, our security director will go to houses and track and follow. Um, be there in the morning to see if there's children sleeping there or, you know, so we, we check all of that.
Okay, and then my job in that position was to actually call the other directors and say, come on, we know that the kid's not living here.
Yeah, we, we, we know, um, and sometimes you get tips from kids themselves.
Exactly, when the teachers know, so, I mean, because if we're looking at, what was the number? Ten out of district and kids that are. You know, and those are costly expenditures, I'm not sorry, so just wanted to bring a couple of those things up that we're kind of following up with that. Okay, thank you.
I have a couple, so one, I just want to say thank you to Kim, Mariana, Annalise and Jeff. I gave you guys a huge ask on Friday for my meeting today and you guys scrambled and I felt so bad asking. At that last minute for that, but I thank you for that. Um, two, uh, Dan Putnam on behalf of the Mirabelli would like to sit down and schedule, would like to come in and do a presentation, um, to the board. On where we are right now in the field and where we're going, so if you want to, I don't know if you want to reach out to him or that, but he would like to come in for a sit-down. Um, and three, um, so I don't know if you know, but I'm on the youth coalition in town. Um, and we have students from high school who sit in on our board and we talk about, uh, mental health, social health. Drug abuse awareness and a assortment of ideas and I kind of had them in the middle of the meeting with the high school kids, kind of give us their feedback on what's going on in the schools. Um, they would like more vegetarian options in the high school cafeteria. Um, that by the time the second wave of lunches comes around, all of the options for them are gone.
That, that should improve because the, so the less volume.
Some of them are eating and that's affecting them emotionally, socially, because there's no value, there's no food available for it. I guess we have a high vegetarian students.
Yeah, salads, everybody.
Well, the salads don't have meat on them.
Okay.
So, and the, the only other option is cheese pizza and that's all gone by the time. That second wave of lunch comes through, so the high school students who are vegetarians would like. A more option, so they're not going hungry.
Okay, I'll talk to Chris for everyone to try to.
And then my fourth one is, is can you please look at the future agenda items, there are things on here from twenty eighteen.
Any other comments? Your motion to adjourn? Second, again, all in favor?
I.
I.